There we go. Welcome, everyone, to the November 23rd, 2021 City Council meeting in the interest of government transparency with the regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting is being posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is being recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you're watching on a computer or device, there was a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options door or communications to be recognized to speak. So this evening, let me get, I know Jamie's calling in. So let me see if I can see him on the call before I bring them in. A lot of talk. All right, Jamie, can you hear me? Is this you? Councilor O'Hara's calling in this evening. So we brought him in as an attempt from an attendee as a panelist. So this evening, I'm going to start from my upper left to go down to my bottom right. We have Counselor Cox, we have myself, Counselor LeBlanc, the Counselor Pep, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Holmgren, Counselor Memhard, Counselor Nolan, Counselor Gilman, and Counselor O'Hara. And also in attendance this evening, we have our IT Director Ryan Knowles, our City Clerk Joy Cinos. Our Chris, do we have an official title today? Or what are we calling you?
Interim CEO.
Interim CEO Chris Segrenza. We have our CFO John Dunn, and we have our City Auditor Penny Costa. Right? With that being said, Madam Clerk, can I have the first order of business, please? Hope you're on mute, Joanne.
Did you read the first part of the about the meeting audio?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. Okay. So the first order of business is oral communications.
All right. So under oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall be allowed to any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to with proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks prior relative to disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. All right. Is there anybody that would like to speak under oral communications? If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine. If you are watching, there is a raised hand button for you to request to speak. All right, we have our first. Linda, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name an address for the record, please.
Linda McCaristin, 16 Quarry Street.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I asked Val today if she could hold a community meeting to update or inform more constituents of the various plans for city changes that have been in the works for periods up to the last few years. She wondered if it wasn't really too early to do that, as she felt it would make sense to wait until the new council was seated before these before the these projects began to be considered. I told her that though I know some things about some plans, including the recently published state zoning legislation, a zoning amendment legislation, I've not had time to study them in any depth and surely not to integrate all those findings into a coherent vision. And and I think it people really, at least a certain chunk of people have to be able to do that in order to have a really participating public. I said to Val that there were some things that were not present, not presently available that that I think are tremendously important. One, one question I have as a result of knowing that although our our population was predicted to go down, in fact, and for the housing plan, our population has gone up. And I would like to know by how much it's gone up and and what demographic is causing that increase and whether or not I would like to know how many new houses have been built in Gloucester since some of these projects began as far as five years ago. How many new bedrooms are in Gloucester? How does that affect the housing production plan? Are those going to be residences? Are they going to be investment properties that are going to be Airbnb, Verbo, and that sort of thing? I think I think these are really important questions for us to 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 have updated before we begin these discussions about zoning amendments, about the harbor, about downtown. And and I know people are interested in this, and it's difficult to get on board. It's difficult. It's difficult to get on board. For me, it was. And I would, I'd like to help people do that. I also have pointed out to Val that the minutes for the planning board for the last two years, that they had no one to do the minutes. So there are no minutes for the planning board for the last two years. And, you know, you're invited to watch the Zoom videos. But in fact, there should be minutes for those meetings so that people can, you know, can scan the minutes and see where it is that the information that they need is located. I think there are enough differences between, oh, and also just finding the current revision of the the housing plan was not, it was not available on the city website today, the 2020 updated vision or version of that. So I think that that there are groups of people, very competent experts, and they have been working steadily to produce documents proposing all sorts of changes to Gloucester in the hope of improving it in one way or another. But but the people have, the people are in the dark. And this is huge. This is a big, you know, one if by land, two if by sea, kind of overwhelming collection of energies and plans and vision for Gloucester. And I think we need to get all the documents available, get them updated, and do what we can, what, you know, to gather people together and educate them on the issues and and how they can best participate. I'm optimistic that doing so will increase the likelihood that we can succeed in continuing to be the Gloucester that people travel far and wide to visit. And I think the Gloucester, that Gloucester that they travel far and wide to visit is 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 not only a matter of what Gloucester is, but it's also a matter of what Gloucester isn't. And and we need to have the options of choosing about what's to come if we don't want Gloucester to become something other than what it is. I know change happens. But anyway, I appreciate your passing these on to new members of the council and to I can, I don't, I guess I can send them to the mayor-elect myself. Thank you for hearing me out again in more detail on my concerns about about these projects.
Not a problem, Linda. We appreciate you coming in. We do have representation from the current administration. I'm sure the new administration, incoming administration will get this. And also on the call tonight, we do have our Counselor Elex, Tracy O'Neil, Tony Gross, Jason Grove, and we also have our superintendent Ben Lummis is on the call this evening. So they did hear what you had to say. So thank you, Linda.
You are very welcome. Thank you for the time.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? If you're calling, you can press star nine. If you're watching, there is a raised hand button to request to speak. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Is the presentation from Ryan Knowles, IT Director, regarding hybrid meeting planning and IT assessments.
All right, welcome, Ryan. How are you?
Doing well.
Good. Nice to have you. And just for a brief background, we did have Ryan here back on August 24th. He gave us a full presentation at City Council. It is in the packet. We do have it on Zoom. So if anybody would like to go back to watch that, the presentation back then, he's going to give us some updates tonight, and we're going to ask him some questions. So I'm going to hand it over to you, Ryan.
Great. You know, as, as Steve said, there was a fuller presentation on the 24th, and that is available, I think, in a number of different forms on the city website. I did want to just briefly share the screen. Just one particular tab. Can
Yeah.
Everybody see?
Yep.
Great. So what what I wanted to just show everybody, because I think that this is worthwhile as we kind of discuss this, because I think really the, when we're talking about a hybrid meeting, I think that one of the biggest kind of open questions for me is Kyros, because I think as referring back to the previous presentation, there, there are a number of places within the city where a quote unquote hybrid meeting is, we're capable of doing that. I think the toughest space is Kyros for a lot of different reasons. So just, just to kind of give you a brief overview for a kind of provisional hybrid meeting, I know that there was some interest in potentially doing that for the final meeting of City Council. Were you interested? I just wanted to at least give the kind of a look at the, first of all, physical layout of the room and what it would look like. There would be basically a main wide angle camera that you can see in the middle main camera that's on the dice. There's microphones on the dice, the normal boost that ones that you're used to. We'd have to have public seating kind of these to one side, because you can see on the other side, there's a TV, and that would be a large screen TV that the diet that those who are in the council, as well as people who are physically present, could see, because we'll need some way to actually have visibility on those who are coming in remotely. The P with the C and the M to the right or directly in front of the public seating is the podium with a camera, a smaller camera and a microphone that is there. And then with speakers that will the speakers in the room so that you can hear a number of different things, because which I will show you in the next slide, as well as then in terms of city staffing, we'd have the clerk kind of, you know, Japan clerk's office, some from the clerk's office, as as usual. But I think that one, the thing I do want to emphasize is that to do this, I or someone from my staff will have to be present for the kind of duration of the meeting because of the complexity of the setup in there for a number of reasons, which I will show you briefly on the next slide. So this is, I did want to ask each of you in the council what hybrid meant to you, because this is what hybrid means to me, which is to say that I think without kind of exhaustively going through this entire diagram, because I think that I don't want to waste our time just running through all these pieces. But there are a couple of different things that have to happen, and some pieces that I think make this a complex undertaking, which is to say that we have to get video from the room where you were all sitting to Zoom somehow, so that people are at home can see it. If get your audio to Zoom, we have to get audio and video from a podium if someone is present and would like to speak to Zoom. And then vice versa, from remote participants, we actually have to get audio and video from them to Zoom and then back into Kyros. We have to have you be able to all hear, you know, in the same way as we had some remote participants, Linda came on and spoke today. If you wanted to do that in a hybrid solution, what you would need to do was we would need to be able to pipe that audio into the room via the speakers. So we have to actually bring audio back into the room from Zoom, as well as video potentially, depending on what we have going on. You know, we have someone who's not able to physically be there, whether a counselor, a participant analyst, or giving presentation, whoever it may be, they would need to show up then on the TV so that we could see them and hear them. So when we're talking about the complexity of a of a situation where a high-grade kind of situation, we have a lot that goes into that. And especially a room like Kyros, I think that that's really, it's important to consider the ways in which that room is unique, because they have a very high ceiling. There's a lot of reverberation. We tried briefly to have some managers meetings in there, and we had to stop because even without microphones, you couldn't even hear, it sounded like the Peanuts parents. You couldn't hear what anyone was saying, just because of the echo and the reverberation of the room. So that presents a real difficulty when you're having audio, both input and output in the room, because what you would, what you'll end up having is feedback echoes, these kind of things that I think we've all experienced to lesser or greater degrees during this pandemic year. So what I think that without, again, kind of having this be, you know, too, too long term, basically just trying to say, I am willing to do it, and I am capable of doing it in somewhere like Kyros. But I think that what I want to emphasize is that particular solution, the reason that I think I highlighted that as a challenging space in my previous meeting, and I still think it is a challenging space, is that that's not somewhere that I think we can immediately flip that that kind of situation on. Because I think just to be totally outright and honest, I don't have the staffing to be able to, because someone will need to staff to do that every single, on every other Tuesday, or anytime we want to have a meeting in there. That is a challenging situation that I would need to create admin time. And, you know, I can barely spare my staff members. And I think anyone who works for the city can tell you that, you know, my staff and myself are driving and running around the city all day long, every single day that we work, we're, you know, we're flat out some days. And there's days that I, you know, I'm trying to write two lines of code, and I don't quite get to the second line by the end of the day, you know, and that's just the day for me. And that's okay. And that's my job. And I take that very seriously. But I also emphasize that, you know, I think that given our current staffing levels, to have some kind of solution whereby someone needs to spend X number of hours every Tuesday or multiple times per week, I think that that's a real, that's a particular resource that we have on hand right now. And I think that that is a particular challenge there. But as I said, short term, if you want to do it for your last meeting, more than happy to do it, to make that happen for you all. And I'm happy to, you know, be in attendance myself to to ensure that that goes off. Because I think that I send you all an email. And I think that that this really comes out of a desire for me to have this be something that goes off well and reflects well on all of you and on our city. Because I take that, I take my job, and I take the things that my office produces and the things that come out of us, even though a lot of it's for the internal digest, so to speak of the city. I take it seriously. And I think that I want to embody excellence in everything I do. I don't want to kind of do it to be just straightforward to half assed way. That's, I don't think that embodies any kind of excellence. I think that embodies kind of, you know, lazy spirit. And I'm not lazy. And others, so that's kind of the the short and long of it. I'm, as I said, really happy to take any questions and feel any questions, concerns that you may have.
All right, Ryan. Thank you. We appreciate the update. And we wouldn't expect anything less from you than half ass. Let, we don't, we don't want you to half ass anything, buddy. We want you to go be perfection. If we're going to do it, or if the administration is going to do it, it should be right. Even if we get to a certain point where it's going to happen, but not happening, I know the school committee is doing it. Maybe we can get permission from the school committee to use their space for the next council to try to get this thing going, and especially get in the flow of hybrid meetings, because I know it's going to be a challenge for all of us. So maybe before we get the Kairos up and running, we get the school committee on board to let us permission, permission to use their space and kind of get the flow going for the next council, or the next council that comes in can get the flow going and get used to it before they go into the Cairo. So
I do want to also note, though, that if 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 Kyros, if you don't want to do Kairos, that's fine, that we, it doesn't have to be, it's not the school or Kairos, you know, I can, we can make it happen in the friend room at the library. We could make it happen in the Harbor Masters office. I mean, there's not a ton of space there. But I also, you know, I think that it's important to ask yourselves as well. How do you expect 100 people to show up in person? Do you expect 10 people? Expect no one? You know, and I think that that's one question. The other question is, you know, I mean, I think that the school committee, it's an interesting model where everyone's sitting there with their laptop open. But I also, I mean, there's, you know, certainly certain utility to be able to turn and say, hey, you know, what do you think about that? They're sitting next to you. But in a way, does that feel that different from what we're doing right now? You know, if we're just everyone sitting there with a laptop open, and that's, that's how it like looks and sounds and all, you know, and I think that some is a true hybrid shows that, you know, like people maybe used to watch it like on, you know, on public access, where you can see everyone sitting there. And I think that there's a certain visual utility in that in a way for if we're going to really do hybrid to do it that, you know, there's, you know, maybe in there as a bridge in the mid range, like that, you know, kind of school committee way. But for example, like I said, in in a room like that, friend room, harbor master, some of those like midsize spaces, those all have the Wi-Fi capability to be able to have that kind of setup. Those I have the wide angle cameras that have microphone and speakers built in that would work fine. And there's not going to be any echo problems in a room like that. You'll be able to hear it fine. You know, that with the TV, that's, you know, those are simpler to set up. And if those are be an easier lift, so to speak, than having to arrange for the school and all that. Happy to also make that work.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to Counselor Questions. Counselor Pep?
Yes. Thank you for the additional information, Ryan, and all your work. I know it's not easy, especially in buildings that are, you know, 150 years old and technology challenged in many ways. Just a question as to inauguration is, you know, coming five weeks from now. And the question is, what, what has been looked at? What is the plan, et cetera, for the incoming administration and, you know, the council and school committee, you know, everything for inauguration day? It's a, it's a big day going forward, and it's only five weeks away. And could you tell us on what, you know, what your plans are, or the IT plans are, or whatever going forward?
So are you specifically asking about the inauguration or post?
Yes. Yeah. No, the inauguration itself.
Inauguration, because that's, because that's a little simpler, as in, we're not trying to also pipe people in to speak, for example, remotely at the inauguration. As far as I know, I think that I think the plan is, everything I've heard is that it's going to be in person. That's going to be more like a traditional broadcast will be able to, I think, work with 1623 to get that out on public access and also to have it, we can, if if people would be interested, they have a ability to bridge it via like Facebook Live, like they have in the past with the debates and those pieces. So that that isn't going to be an issue. That is something I've also, I know that there's been a longstanding, what about the audio in the room? I was, as part of preparation for this meeting, the audio I know in the past has been very poor in that room. And after spending an hour climbing under the stage, I finally found the cause of it, and I, it will be fixed for the inauguration. So people will be able to hear it on the TV. I have now, you split in the wire and fix it.
All right. That's awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Barry. Counselor Memhard, then Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you again, Ryan. I feel like we're in good hands here, and that you're going to help chart the course for us forward. It appears that the capacity of the space that we're trying to make hybrid is the issue in terms of existing resources within the city, and that Kairos has a set of limitations that are a longer term enterprise, especially in the context, as John Dunn explained, that the other ongoing general renovations in that space that really need to be dovetailed with any investment, any expenditure of funds. So again, the capacity is the factor. So if we're, and I know you ranked them in a prior meeting in terms of the Harbor Masters office, or the KATA conference room, or the Sora Free Library Friend Room, as as alternative spaces. Now, we've met, we're discussing the where the school committee meets. And it, we, it sounds like any one of those could work for the City Council, and we just need to gauge it for the anticipated volume of attendance, virtual and physical, to make it a good fit. And if that's the case, then, you know, City Council can go on the road and move around here and and be accessible as a totally hybrid model, just picking locations, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the, that's the extent of it. It's not, you know, the, the tech side and in those other rooms is much simpler. You know, I think that probably for the first couple of meetings, it would take me or something from my staff to kind of give a little, here's how you do it. But it's not terribly different from what we're doing now in those kind of circumstances, as long as the right equipment is there. And as long as we know where it is, in terms of moving around, like from place to place to place, might be a little challenging, because depending on the main thing you need, there's a TV. So, you know, depending on where where that is, if there's not existing TV, one will be brought. So, you know, the the Antiques Roadshow model might not work, but the, but if it's a, but if it's, you know, one, one or two places, especially Harbor Master has an existing TV there, you know, I think room does, I'd have to go double check and see if there is, if not, we can get one there. So, you know, like those, those spaces are, that would be the main limitation in those spaces. Might be a little bit of, you know, how big the room is, it might be a little challenge with the audio, but I'm, it's something I can solve.
It sounds like, as you say, we can solve it. We just need to be clear that our long term vision and plan would be for the City Council to return to our quarters at Gloucester City Hall. But we need to dovetail that return with the technology upgrade and the other planned renovations that the City Hall Restoration Committee is engaged with. We're not in any way or means abandoning City Hall, but we're just going to take a potential leave of absence while we catch up with the technology, the most effective and economical way for our meetings to be fully accessible. Thank you.
Exactly. And I think that that's, yeah, I mean, and that, that's just my recommendation. You know, I, we could spend $80,000 and get it going in a couple of months, probably, you know, three to five months, probably take, to get it end to end. But, you know, in terms of, I believe that, you know, that's, that's not my money. That's people who live here's money, and I don't want to spend it and then spend more to tear it all out and redo it, you know, later on. I think that that's a importance of, you know, of those funds. I would, I would much rather, and I think it will look nicer, you know, as Steve has mentioned, when you're sitting in Kairos, you see big orange cat six cables running along the the front of the balustrade there. And I think, you know, I'd, I'd love to not see those. I'd love to actually look, have it look nice and seamless, but also be technologically kind of accessible. So.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Ryan, for coming in tonight. Just a few things for clarification. This, we've always known Kairos was going to be an issue. We talked about this back in May, when we had you before us for the, your budget and and a revisit with your budget. And it was Counselor Cox that actually left some money in there to try to soften the cushion later on for getting some of these things done. Several times over the last few months, several months, I have asked about, and let me just explain, that's one of the reasons why this council has always stayed with Zoom, because we wanted to be able to be viewed by everybody in the city, and we thought that was the best way to do it. However, you know, I guess you did identify several locations that were easily done and had the capability to do. And several times, we've asked, you know, with our dozen or so commissions and committees, why they couldn't use these spaces and and why we haven't been working on getting them back in. We've asked several times, is there any reason? Like, there've been several waterways would meetings that I haven't been able to physically attend, but I would have liked to either attend them or watch them in video. One was last night, and and I couldn't do it, couldn't make it physically. But it, the capability is there. Is there any reason that we can't have this? Have we been working on this right along since August? Or is this something we just started working on recently? Or are we working on?
So in terms of a board commission, I will say reasoning, I don't, I don't speak to any of the reasoning behind whether these things were, were not going to happen. The directive that I've had is that as of September 15th, that all meetings will be in person. Full stop. That's the, that's a directive I received, and that's what I acted on. My, my office, as I said, is busy, is, it's got a lot going on. And so, you know, I mean, in terms of how I reflect and choose, how I spend my or my staff's time, I think that it's, it's important for me to do things that I'm directed to do. In terms of, could it be done? I think, as I said, in the, you know, as I said, in the August meeting, it's, it's, I have the equipment in my office. It, the capability is there. I don't, I have no technical barrier to accomplishing it. So I mean, any, you know, I think that it's my, my belief is that, you know, I, I answer to the administration that, you know, the directives that I received was that we were going to in person meetings, and there was not, there was not a specific, no one said work. Also, they should all be hybrid. If they did, I would have made it happen.
Thank you, Ryan.
John, Counselor Goman?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ryan. Appreciate it. So I got a couple of questions. First of all, is it April of this year that we no longer will be able to allow to have Zoom, and we have to go back to in-person meetings? Or or hybrid? I guess that's
As far as I understand, the As far as I understand, the extension that I think Governor Vega made, I think that that is the kind of tremendous ad clam of the, of his current order. I, I will be interested to see whether that gets extended, because I think that there has been so much interest in, you know, kind of increased participation. And in general, just I think people have liked the ability to have Zoom meetings. And so, in terms of the, the official order, I believe it's April.
So that would definitely have an effect on what it is we need to do as well as for all of our other boards and commissions, correct? So there, there's, there's something to be said that we need to understand what it is we have to do by a certain date. So that's.
Yeah, I think that that will be largely a, a job for the, you know, the Solicitor's Office and interpretation of what that ordinance means versus what we're actually doing, you know. My, 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 my office, I tend to try to stay away from legal opinions.
Okay, so I guess I agree with what Council Memard has said, that I think it doesn't really matter where we are, but I think we want to do this as a council. So if, if it, if it works in the library at Gloucester High or the O'Malley Learning Commons or whatever, that we should really look at that as a hybrid model. And we realize, Ryan, that you would need to supply us with either yourself or a member of IT to be there for those meetings. And so my, my follow-up question there would be, how about for our standing committee meetings? Because that would mean a lot of resources. And I know, I know our mayor-elect Ferga is passionate that this is something that he wants to do. So maybe we need to go back and ask him to work with IT to come up with a plan that talks about the multi-steps that we need to take to make this happen, which would include money in the budget for this, because we can't burn you out by being at all of, even the city council meetings would be an insurmountable time commitment for you or someone, right? You've got Monday, Wednesday, Thursday nights every other week and then long city council meetings. And we understand that you would need to be there for that, even if we were at Gloucester High or wherever. So I guess I look at this as kind of a two-part approach with budgetary implication. And to me, it's really important. I think, I think the silver lining in the pandemic was Zoom meetings and transparency became really evident and we became pretty spoiled with Zoom meetings. So I would hate to lose that momentum, but it comes with a cost, so that's.
And I, and I appreciate the recognition better one, because I think that that's the, you know, I, I, I think that we could probably start working towards having it be a little bit more plug and play. It wouldn't, it, it, I don't know that it would necessarily in perpetuity always require someone from my staff to be sitting there babysitting the whole thing. It would, it would, but it would, I think it's, it will be a really profitable discussion to discuss. I think especially as we kind of go into this new administration and this new council. What is it that you want out of these Zoom, you know, these hybrid meetings? Do you want, you know, do you want to just sit, all sit there with your laptops open? Because that's, you know, that's not that different from what you're doing now, which is open your laptops and fire up the Zoom meeting. And the only difference is, you know, most of you got to turn off the microphones or else it's going to be terrible, you know? I mean, it's not, not a huge lift there. If that's what you want to do, you know, we can set it up that way. But if you want it to feel a little more collaborative, you want to feel like people can see you all sitting next to each other and talking rather than weirdly and turning to the side, you know, in your camera, then, you know, that's, I think that, 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 that takes a little bit more, but I still don't think it's impossible. I think that, you know, I've, I've, you know, you know, for the Health Director interview, I kind of, we got, we had a, a, a kind of somewhat hybrid situation, it was very small, it was, you know, with three members of, I think, the, you know, the committee that were on that. But I used one of those in, in one of the conference rooms in the Cape building, you know, and, and I, I was able to leave for the day after I kind of helped them get it going, so I wasn't, you know, there for four hours, you know, babysitting it. So I think the capabilities are there and I think that someone could learn it. But yeah, I think that we need to have a real conversation about the necessary resources and where those are going to come from.
Thank you.
Thank you, Belle, any other counselor questions, Counselor Cox?
I know we've spent a lot of time talking about Kyrus, but in-person meetings also require our conference room to be, bless you, Steve, our conference room on the main floor to be wired for committee meetings. A lot of the heavy lifting is done at committee level and for people to be able to view those meetings as well as a full city council meeting, I think is important. Ryan, I admire that your work ethic and the work ethic of your crew. You have a great team and I don't mean to pile more on you, but it is one of the aspects of our working together and it's part of city council. It's not just, you know, every other Tuesday, it's the week on the committee week as well that needs to be hybrid and needs to be viewed. You know, I, I am at the end of my tenth year. At the beginning of my first year, we talked about that committee room being opened up and the wall taken out and make it bigger for audience and everything else. So, and it still hasn't been done. I think this is an opportunity for that committee room to be wired for hybrid and also anybody else that uses that room when we're not using it in the evenings. So I, I just don't want to, I don't want to get caught up with just doing the city council chambers, but also doing our committee chambers, so thank you.
And just, just a quick, you mean the, the first floor that kind of crossed from the mayor's office? Yeah, that, I mean, that, that room, I think that, I think that that one has a lot more, that, that will be a lot easier to do than Kyrus. It's right next to the server room right there. The server room, you know, as I, as I've told my team, don't breathe in there, because, you know, you knock a wire out and then, you know, no one's into the internet, it's out for the, out for the building. And we're, that's, that's going to be Thursday for you guys. So, but, but I think, I think that one has a lot more short-term capability, you know, even again. It would be similar to the different room, you know, there'd be a little bit of time and effort that we need to go into it. But I think that that one's a pretty realistic space to be able to look for, you know, if the, the only thing would be a little bit of us, it's a little bit to get a TV in there, because we're L-shaped in there, you know, might be a bit of a challenge, but I think we could accomplish that.
Awesome, thank you, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Melissa, any other, any other counselor questions? All right, so I'm going to speak a little bit earlier this, later this afternoon. We got a email from Patty Page requesting us to to kind of push the hybrid for all committees, boards and commissions. I, I totally agree with her, I think this is a no-brainer for, for citywide, but that ultimately doesn't come down to us, that goes through the administration. So we'd have to request that the, the incoming administration do something about that. And I think, you know, the Planning Board, the ZBA, you know, all these meetings should be hybrid. But my concern, my questions and my concerns are, and this will be for the next council, is that how to, how to maintain and how to function these hybrid meetings? Because if we do have a meeting, say hypothetically, at the library in the, in the friend's room and, I mean, who's going to be there? Is it going to be a couple of city counselors? Is it going to be the council president? Some, some counselors may want to stay home and say, you know what, I can just do it from my house. You know, if people show up and there's not a council, a counselor there, what happens? You know, because I think these, these meetings are great, there's a lot of people that have been attending these meetings. And I, you know, and me just being a regular Joe, just like all of us, I understand their, 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 their day-to-day operations. We've had people on public hearings before that have asked to speak. And I know they stepped away from the microphone to go do something, we wait patiently for them to come back. You know, they've got childcare to do instead of having to come down to the, the auditorium or wherever these are going to be. Without having to get childcare, they can, they can attend these meetings from home and specifically jump on when they need to jump on, which is great, because I remember for years and Melissa and, and a few of you guys remember, you know, we've had some five, six-hour meetings in the middle of July, it's been a thousand degrees to the public hearing. And the public hearing is the last item on the agenda, people have sat through the whole thing. And it's discouraging for these people to sit through this whole thing. I think it's more functionable for them to be able to sit at home and pay attention to what's going on and then jump on when they need to get on and listen and speak. So I think, you know, moving forward, all boards and commissions, and not only the city council should be hybrid. And that's just me personally, but that would have to be for the administration to decide. And that would have to be for the next council and how to, to, to set up a procedural part for maintaining and running these council meetings. Like I said, who's going to be at the meeting, who's going to be at home? And how to, how to, how to get the public involved with the council, whether they're there or not. So without any other questions for Ryan, are we all set with Ryan? Yeah, all right, awesome, Ryan, thank you, you're doing a fantastic job. We appreciate everything you do, you know that, we had a good talk this afternoon. And I, I'm, you know, as, as Melissa said, some of us are on the, on the, on the way out the door, but I'm sure we'll still be in touch with you and, and I'm sure, like myself and some of these other people that are going out the door, we're still going to be involved and wish, we'll see you, you know, from time to time. Scott, did you have something?
I was just going to ask Council President if we could request that Ryan submit that updated presentation that he shared with us, so it through, through Joanne in the clerk's office, so that's readily available to all of us again. Just to build it, building on our understanding of what's involved.
Yep, not a problem, thank you, Scott. Yeah, so Ryan, I, you sent that to Joanne earlier today, right?
I did, she's got it, yeah.
Yeah, so Joanne, if we can put that somewhere, maybe put it attached to this meeting somehow, whatever, we can do that. All right, awesome, thank you, Ryan, have a good night, pal, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, night.
All right, and before we start, we have our police chief has joined the call to the meeting this, tonight. So Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments.
All right, I'm going to hand it over to our Ordinance Administration Chair, Counselor Nolan.
Everybody, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council appoint Richard Gutman to the Open Space and Recreation Committee, term to expire two fourteen twenty-three, and I so move.
I'll second that and it's Richard Quaitman.
Quaitman, sorry.
Quaitman, all right, no problem. It's been moved by Council Nolan, seconded by Council of Blank, any discussion? All right, Counselor Gilman.
Yeah, I've, I've worked with Richard and on open space matters and he's a great resource. So I think that this is a awesome appointment, so thank you.
Thank you, Belle, I'm going to speak on Richard too, he's a great guy. He sits on a couple, he's sat on a couple of different committees and boards. He does a fantastic job and I will support him a hundred percent tonight. All right, anybody else, Counsel Holmgren?
I agree with what you've both said, I'm absolutely supporting this appointment and Richard, thank you for serving.
I don't see him on the call this evening, so we invited him, but we all know who he is, obviously, and he does sit on a couple of other boards. So anybody else before we move the motion, I mean, before we roll call? All right, I will call for the roll, Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara. We do have Jamie on the call, I was going to hold off on Jamie. Counselor Pet?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara, can you hear me? All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one technical difficulty. All right, Madam Clerk, the next order of business, please.
Is the consent agenda.
All right, is there any counselors that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
All right, removed by Counselor Cox, seconded by two-thirds of the council. All right, I will off for the roll call, Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara. All right, Counselor Pet?
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara. All right, motion passes on a roll call vote to accept the consent agenda as written on a roll call from eight in favor, one technical difficulties. We do have a unanimous consent agenda, is there anybody that would like to move anything from the unanimous consent agenda? I'm going to remove item one under Counselors' Orders and I'll just give a, it's just for information only. I had a real good conversation with our DPW Director yesterday about road openings. And when I mean road openings, I mean people that go in and open up the road physically to do repairs. And I picked his brain a little bit, asked him about what the liability is on that people that ask permission or take out a, a permit to, to dig into the road. He said it was very, very gray. I asked him, you know, what, with the maintenance part of it, is it one year, two year, three years? He said, very gray, it needs to be reviewed, it needs to be revisited, it needs to be updated. I put this on the agenda, it's probably not going to go through with this council, so it's probably going to go through with the next council and Ordinance Administration. But, you know, my vision is that if somebody opens up the road, they should, they should be liable for that trench for three, four, or five years, but like I said, I'll leave that up to the next council. Counsel, yeah, Counselor. DPW Director Mike Hale said that he's going to work with the Ordinance Administration to really come up with some teeth to hold these people liable. When I go in and I get my shelter permit, I get a packet and everything is in the packet and tells me what I need to do. And I think that when the road opening happens, that they should be handed a packet and everything, all the rules and regulations should be there. And that'll give the, the, this council and the administration, or not this council, but any council and administration teeth to bring these people back and maintain any opening in the road or any trench or whatever they're going to do at the time. So that's my explanation for my, my order. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the unanimous consent agenda, there we go.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor Gilman. Roll call, Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yeah.
Yes, all right, Counselor Pet?
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed, nice to have you back, Jamie. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of November eighteenth.
And I will hand it over to our Chair, Counselor, Budget Finance Chair, Counselor Cox.
Hi, everybody, I have a consent agenda for your viewing pleasure. If anybody would like to pull anything off of that, please do so now or forever hold your peace. Seeing none, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor Memhard. Do we have any narrative, Counselor Cox?
I just want to let you know that we have eighty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents in grants and donations and one essay to improve the high school with new lockers.
All right, awesome, we appreciate that. Any other discussion before we do the roll call? All right, seeing none, I will off of the roll. Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor Pet.
Yes.
And Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Motion passes to accept the Budget and Finance unanimous consent agenda on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. I'm going to, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee Report of November fifteenth.
Thank you, Joanne, Counselor Gilman. Joanne had reached out to me just before the meeting and the applicant has asked for a withdrawal from this. You want to offer a motion to withdraw this permit?
So moved.
There we go.
Excuse me, second. Excuse me, sorry, we were doing, we were doing O and A Standing Committee Report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard P and D, I have a, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, all right. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard P and D. I have a, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. All right, ordinance administration, Council Nolan.
There's no matters under this head, and thank you.
There we go. That's, I got a little ahead of myself. Now we'll hand it over to Council Gilman.
So I I moved the motion to withdraw.
Second.
To move by Council Gilman, seconded by Council Holmgren for a motion to withdraw the special permit here. What is it, a special permit or just a?
Road closure.
Road closure, okay. All right, any discussion? Obviously not. The applicant has asked to withdraw this. Council Pep?
Just question, okay, so we're down at number two. I didn't know what happened. Did I miss number one or? I'm sorry, this, we're sort of like jumping around.
I just wanted to do, I did wanted to do this one, so if anybody's here for this one, that they, that they they don't have to sit on the call anymore. All right, all right, so we have a motion to withdraw from item number two. Roll call is Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Council LeBlank, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yeah.
Council Pep?
Yes.
And Council Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes to withdraw on a roll call of nine in favor, zero opposed. Council Gilman?
Great, so we have a memorandum from Police Chief recommending the construction manager at-risk procurement delivery method for the police station courthouse reconstruction project, and our committee recommendation was on a motion by Council Pep, seconded by Council Holmgren. The Planning Development Committee voted by a roll call three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve a construction manager at risk CMR approach under MGL Chapter one forty-nine A as a public construction alternative to the design bid-build method under MGL Chapter one forty-nine for the police station slash courthouse reconstruction project, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council Gilman, seconded by Council Holmgren, Council Gilman.
Yes, and and I'm delighted that Chief Conley is here and Assistant Chief Fitzgerald was on our call, so. With your permission, it might be most helpful if he could just speak on behalf of the police. I know Council McCarthy is also on that team, so we're well covered here today.
All right, do we have any council questions for Police Chief? Council Pep?
I would just, yeah, I was just going to add that in our meeting, the discussion came up, and I think the Chief can confirm this, that Council McCarthy will continue, even though he won't be a city counselor after the beginning of the year, he is being kept on this committee if it's approved here, if this method is approved as a very experienced person important to making these decisions going forward, so just wanted to make sure that people understood that he would continue. It's not not just him being here as a council representative.
Yes, so earlier when we did this, I made a motion to remove the council apart from John's name, and just to keep him on as a person and see this throughout the whole thing. I don't think anybody knows the building better than John does, so he's gonna be an asset to this to this. So he will stay stay on as long as he wants to. We'll leave that up, we'll leave that up to him. So we do have Ed on. Ed, how are you tonight?
Good evening, councilors. I'm well, thank you. So apologies, my video isn't, I don't think I have the right invite to access the video here.
That's all right. We brought you in from an attendee, so we we know what you look like.
Good, because I'm peeling potatoes right now, so. Yeah, Council Pep, to answer your question, just to add, absolutely, in fact, I would add to that, that that Council McCarthy doesn't have a choice. I know where he lives. I know where to find him. I know where to find him in Florida, so he doesn't have a choice, and we we look forward to having his institutional knowledge to bring to bear on a lot of difficult decisions that have yet to be made.
Awesome. Any other questions for the chief? All right, seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion before we move on? All right, I will ask for the roll. Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlank, yes. Council McCarthy?
I guess I have to say yes.
We know where you live, John. Council Memard?
Thank you, John, yes.
Council Nolan?
Absolutely.
Council O'Hara?
Yeah.
Council Pep?
Yes, and thank you, John, for remaining committed to the city going forward.
And Council Cox?
Yes, and thanks, Tom, for keeping, taking one for the team and sticking with it next year.
Thank you, John. All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Val. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Yeah, I move to reconsider. Motion to reconsider.
All right, we have a second to reconsider, and we have a second by Council Holmgren. All right, everybody understand the motion to reconsider? All right, I'll start off with Council Gilman.
No.
Council Holmgren?
No.
Councilor LeBlank, no. Council McCarthy?
No.
Councilor Memard?
No.
Councilor Nolan?
No.
Council O'Hara?
No.
Council Pep?
No.
And Council Cox?
No.
All right, motion, motion to reconsider fails on a roll call vote of zero in favor, nine opposed. And I'm just gonna explain the motion to reconsider. I know we have Tracy on the call, and for the people that don't know what a motion to reconsider is. So after we do a vote, we have twenty-four hours to reconsider our vote, so we can go in, we can go into the clerk's office tomorrow and reconsider our vote, and it will be brought back to the next council meeting for a revote. So the motion to reconsider basically shoots down our our opportunity to revisit this within the twenty-four hour period. So basically, the vote stops tonight. We can't go into the clerk's office tomorrow and ask to change our vote, therefore will not be back on the council meeting. We usually use this to expedite certain things that are a time constraints, so we're trying to get things in before a certain time, so I don't think there was a certain time for this, Val, but I think this is a good reconsideration to, it passes with this council meeting, and it doesn't get bumped out to the next one for some reason, if somebody goes in tomorrow, so everybody that's listening, that's what a motion to reconsider is, and this is why we get it. Madam Clerk and Council Gilman?
Yep, thank you. I I would like to add one thing that came up at P and D. Council LeBlank, you were there, so you remember what we brought up. But I'd just like to make it known that RZ two thousand twenty-one oh oh three, in accordance with GZO Section one point one one point two A, amend GZO Sections two point three point one residential uses comma three point two dimensional table. Three point two two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs and three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty-five feet, that was to be continued until December eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. However, we had made a decision that we wanted to not bring that to P and D until the new council meets after the first of the year. So I just wanted to mention that for the members of the public that might be on the call, and for the rest of the council that had not that opportunity to hear us say that at our P and D meeting, so thank you, counselor.
Thank you, Val. Madam Clerk?
Okay, so I just want to mention on that matter that there's going to be the public hearing on the rezoning for the multifamily, and that is gonna show up on the December fourteenth city council meeting. And the reason we had to advertise for that because of the time requirements that the city council needs to hear it. So but it also is going to be continued to the next council in January of two thousand and twenty-two. So I just want to put that out there, that if you see the public hearing for zoning amendments for the multifamily, that is going to be continued to January two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next order of business, please.
Is the discussion only city council discussion regarding resuming in-person meetings?
All right. Where do we start with this, and where do we stop? Anybody would like to start this? So this is just, I mean, we've got one meeting left for the public, for council, one standing committee left, standing committee meeting left, and one council meeting. Council McCarthy?
I'm just gonna throw out there, I just, before the meeting, saw the the COVID numbers again coming through from Joanne, and in two days, we had twenty odd new cases. And listening to Ryan tonight, I just kind of think, my own opinion is, we just do our last meeting in Zoom. We can have a reunion sometime later.
That's fine. I agree, you know, we talked about this two weeks ago, and to get into the the school chambers to do our last meeting together, I'm not familiar with it. I don't want to you know, try to fudge things through and not be able to do certain things. We've kind of perfected this here from wherever we're sitting at home. And I agree with with Council McCarthy. I think, you know, we gotta get together at some point, have a glass of wine or a drink somewhere, then we'll do that at another time, but we get our city business done, and we can now, we can figure things out. We can still yuck it up at our lax meeting and give kudos or whatever we have to do on online. All right, anybody else? I guess that's it. All right, awesome. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is Counselor's request to the mayor.
All right, I'm gonna start with Council Cox.
I have none, thank you.
All right, Council Pep?
Just a wish for everyone to have a safe holiday coming up. And understanding, as Council McCarthy has said, we've gotten some information, the numbers continue to increase, so ask everyone to be, you know, cognizant of what you're doing and who you're with and how closely you're with them or whatever, but hopefully everyone has a safe and healthy holiday, and including actually holiday season going forward. Next week, the on Tuesday, the temple invites everyone to come and see the world's only lobster trap menorah. Get lit on Tuesday evening at five thirty, we'll be outdoors and serving things like, you know, latkes and that type of things outside, and we hope everybody can come, join us and show us how how the how the Jewish community can make lobsters kosher. I I hope not on the call this evening.
Awesome, Barry, thank you. Council McCarthy?
Nothing, but I'm in for one of those kosher lobsters.
Yeah, me too. Council Holmgren?
Nothing. Echoing Barry's sentiments, have a very safe and happy Thanksgiving. Consider getting a booster if you haven't already done so. I believe they have been approved for all adults now, and I'll see you at the menorah lighting.
Thank you, Jen. Council Memard?
Thank you all. Ditto, 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 ditto. I would make, just a reminder that the election's not over yet, and that Barry and Tracy have a recount on Monday, December first, and I wish them both good luck and to see who we'll be working with, serving on the council next next term.
Thank you, Scott. Council Nolan?
Lots of ditto's and ditto's and ditto's. The one thing I will want to thank is I want to thank Ringo Starr and his team and the Peak family for getting the tree up for the Boulevard at Kent Circle. It looks wonderful. There's a lot of hard work. Those guys did an excellent, excellent job.
Thank you, Sean. It's like a, it's like a Seinfeld episode, the yada, yada, yadas. Council O'Hara?
Thank you. The Magnolia Library is gonna be hosting a blood drive on the twenty-ninth of this month for Manchester, New Hampshire, Fire Captain Steve DeRosa. Fire Captain DeRosa was burned in a multifamily fire in Manchester, New Hampshire on November sixth. He's burned unfortunately over thirty-five percent of his body. Blood burn patients use a tremendous amount of blood product in there. Unfortunately, very painful recovery, so I ask, we ask everyone who's able-bodied to consider calling Dana Faber. All the information's on the Magnolia Library website to make an appointment. We will be having four other Red Cross collections in the name of Stephen DeRosa as well. I have two other requests to the mayor, one dealing with snow sidewalk removal. A constituent emailed me, she's a senior citizen, lives on a corner lot in the center of town. She has been living up to the ordinance of removing the snow through another senior citizen. Unfortunately, he's had a heart heart condition and cannot continue. She's called around to many companies, and no one will remove snow from the sidewalks. Obviously, everyone's dealing with employee issues, so this is a real issue that I've been advocating that I think we as a city need to address because it's it's reality, that snow is not gonna be removed. We have an ordinance on the books and our most our most vulnerable constituents, taxpayers, are the ones who worry the most about it, and I just think some way we we've got to address this, get it off the books, put the ownership on the city. Also, another constituent emailed me a picture at Oak Grove Cemetery. It was a rather sad picture of dozens of poop bags from apparently dog owners who are letting their dogs walk, run in the cemetery, and possibly the mayor, whether our present mayor or the incoming mayor can address it through public service announcement. This isn't just a problem in the cemeteries, which is an ordinance issue, but it's happening all over at the Boulevard, that dogs are a wonderful part of everyone's life, and a happy dog is a tired dog, and dogs need to run, but there are certain areas where they can't run. And possibly we as a city need to expand areas that we can legally allow dog owners to take their dogs. I think dog owners need to show respect to our cemeteries, our families that that have loved ones. To show that disrespect is unfortunate, so I hope that the, again, the mayor present and future can address this. Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, Jamie. Council Gilman?
Thank you, Council. I have two brief things. First, from my meeting on October ninth at Corliss Landing, which was attended by about sixty abutters. I need to review with both Mike Hale and TJ Shimataro some of the questions that came up, so I probably can answer about half of them on my own in having chatted, but I just need to, permission to be able to meet with both of them to it can just be sending them the information to get answers, so I can get back to the abutters and let them know what the answers are. I've shared that with all the counselors, so and the incoming counselors as well, so you know what those questions were. And the second thing that I just wanted to bring up is, I would like us to consider through the mayor's office doing more upgrades to or communications about the nine-one-one information system. I think that when we had the tornado the other night, we were just in communicated through the weather channel about the tornado. But it kind of gave me an opportunity to do some reach out to my constituents with the great opportunity that we have through the city's website for people to sign up to get emergency alerts, and many and many times people have not signed up, or maybe they have their landline that's still there, and they no longer have their landline. So I just think that we can do more of a blitz to let people know about that opportunity, because we need to reach out when there is an emergency, and I'm not so sure everyone is all into the nine- And I'm not so sure everyone is all into the nine-one-one emergency alert. So that's it, thank you. Thanks all, and have a nice turkey day. Don't eat too much and try to get out of doing the dishes.
All right, thank you, Val. I don't have anything for the mayor's request. And just have a healthy and safe Thanksgiving for everybody. With that being said, Kenny, thank you for being here tonight. John, Chris, thank you for being here. Tony, Tracy, Jason was on earlier. We appreciate you. And, you know, Linda, you were here earlier, you come to quite a few meetings. Mary Ann, I'm going to give you a shout-out to you, come to all the meetings. We appreciate your civic duty that you guys put into this, and we appreciate you guys being here. With that being said, I will offer a motion to adjourn, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moving to second, and Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
And Counsel Cox?
Yes.
All right, we have a nine in favor, zero opposed to adjourn. Thank you, everyone, have a great evening, and have a safe holiday. Good night, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.